There a second? Motion of a second, all those in favor say by, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, on to the regular items on the agenda. First up is the rezoning case REZ 23-07. 111, 113, 115, West Young Street. It's Shaw George, Michael.
Good evening, sir. Can you hear me on the mic? Good evening, this is a rezoning application 23-07 for the properties at 111, 113 and 115. Oh, I'm sorry, West Young Street. General location is on the west or the south side, I guess, of West Young Street, just above the cobble. Pardon me?
No.
Maybe so. All right, if you don't mind, I'm gonna start over.
All right.
Now that we have all the screens going. So this is rezoning 23-07 for 111, 113 and 115 West Young Street. General location is on the west or south side of West Young Street, just above the under-construction cobblestone project at the intersection of Young and Main. Here's a generalized street view from not too, too long ago of these three properties. They run like this in front of you. Each one of these single properties does have an existing residence on them. The request here is to change the zoning from the existing residential low-density or RL district to a conditional zoning district of the general commercial. So it's a GC-CZ request. This comes with four proposed, proposed conditions of approval, which are clipped there on your screen. Basically, that there's a use restriction list, which is attached to the conditions in the packet, and that this project would develop no more than seven upper-story residential dwelling units and a minimum of 5,000 and a maximum of 30,000 square foot of non-residential on the property. And then a unique condition for, should a site development plan be proposed to the town that shows evidence of more than 20,000 square foot of non-residential space, the applicant would do a traffic impact analysis. In the packet is a traffic generation letter that was run, and it was based off the worst-case scenario, the 30,000 square foot that is in their condition as a possibility. And it just broached, breached, broached the thresholds for triggering a TIA. So after some discussion, this condition was put in place to, to make sure that if the traffic analysis even came close to that worst-case analysis circumstance, they would do a traffic impact analysis at that point in time. So at this time of rezoning, it was waived due to the nature of this project, the location of this property, and the nature of the way that that traffic generation was, was generated. So should they show that much square footage of non-residential in the future, a traffic impact analysis would be done. And whatever recommendations are in that would be binding, and the applicant would have to do those physical improvements. Future land use map here shows the big picture, and so our property is right there. It's a little bit of orange, which is that medium-density residential category. And you can see over the larger map how much orange there is all across town, basically all west side of the Young, Averitt, Roseville Road corridor. That's not in some other categories such as the mixed-use neighborhood or a business park. And then around the downtown core area along Main Street is a, is a various mix of commercial and so forth. But so this little pocket of land was remaining as medium-density residential, surrounded by other more intense categories. The analysis of this through the TRC review and for staff was that this is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and some of the other plans for the town, such as the Main Street Vision Plan or the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Generally, non-residential and/or multifamily uses would be appropriate on this very small grouping of properties due to their size and their orientation, the fact that they front on a minor arterial road, which is Young Street, and then the adjacent development that's occurring, basically the cobblestone project there immediately adjacent to them, where there's a three-story apartment building under construction on two sides. The medium-density residential land use category does speak to and support multifamily and non-residential uses in certain circumstances. And staff's analysis is that this is one of those key circumstances and locations where something other than medium-density residential, which is probably three to five acres per unit of single, single-family detached or attached, is appropriate. And then redevelopment of older properties such as this, so close to the town core of Main and Young, with what would be viewed as higher and better uses, is supported in this location. So wrapping up the traffic impacts and TIA, we discussed that, how that was waived at this time of the rezoning. But there is a condition that should the, the development broach 20,000 square foot, they would do a TIA at that time. The applicant is here, they do have a presentation prepared, and the proposed motion is shown here, and we'll bring that back up at the end of the discussion.
All right.
So with that, I'm gonna bring up the applicant's PowerPoint and turn it over to them.
Good evening, Kier Moss, and members of the planning board. My name is Worth Mills with Longleaf Law Partners. I'm here on behalf of the Joel Fund, which is a local nonprofit serving veterans. They are the rezoning applicant. Brooke Dickhart, who is the founder and executive director of the Joel Fund, is here as well. And she'll speak a little bit about the Joel Fund and what they do and what their plans are for this site in just a second. But again, and I'll, you know, I'll try not to be repetitive of Michael's presentation. But as mentioned, the three properties total, just over an acre and a half. It's currently zoned for residential low-density. We're proposing to rezone it to general commercial conditional zoning for the purpose of a veteran activity space, meeting space for veterans, with up to seven upper-story units for veterans above that meeting space. It would also include space for the Joel Fund to move some of their office operations to. We think it'll be a very great asset to the town and to this immediate area. Now I'll let Brooke speak a little bit about the Joel Fund, their history, and again, what they plan to do here.
Thank you, Worth. I just want to first say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here tonight. I always appreciate when I get to share my dad's story, so thank you very much. As Worth said, I'm Brooke Dickhart. I'm the executive director and founder of the Joel Fund. And I started the Joel Fund in 2015 after I lost my dad. He was a Navy SEAL for 20 years. He was, did four tours in Vietnam and passed away in 2014 after a long battle with PTSD. So everything we do is geared towards helping veterans and their families, so they don't have to go through what we went through. Over the years, we have grown pretty significantly. We have three main programs. We run an art program for veterans and their families. We have a resource connection where we work one-on-one with veterans. We also work with community partners to get veterans connected to the resources that are available to them. And then we also have a furniture program where we deliver home furnishings to veterans transitioning out of homelessness. We work with the VA across all their departments to achieve these goals. They're an amazing partner of ours, and we have their support on these projects. But I think what's important to mention, so we have been operating out of Wake Forest for a number of years, and we have outgrown our space. Last year, let's see, in 2022, we served 1,400 veterans and family members, and last year, we served 2,000. So our hope is to be able to do more with the veterans within Roseville and in Wake County. We just received a grant from Wake County Capital Funding for $264,000 to put towards the renovation of one of the homes on the land. So really excited about this opportunity, and if you have questions about the Joel Fund and want to learn more, please let me know.
Thank you, Brooke. As Michael mentioned, the properties are near the kind of core of the town center area. We are bordering cobblestone on our, our west and our south, and then across West Young Street, our single-family homes. So we think that this rezoning and this use type is a good land use transition from the intense multi, or mixed-use project of cobblestone as you move east across West Young Street over to the single-family homes. Here are some street views of 111 West Young, 113 West Young, and 115 West Young. As mentioned, it's currently zoned residential low-density, and primarily in that zoning district, you're gonna have single-family homes and civic uses. We do border a town center district, and there are other GC districts near the Main Street and West Young Street intersection. So we think that a GC conditional zoning here is compatible with the different zoning districts nearby. And the, the future land use map of medium-density residential recommends a mix of housing types, densities between three and five units per acre, with some smaller amounts of non-residential to complement the residential onsite as well, which is precisely what we're trying to do here. These are the conditions, along with the allowed special and prohibited use table that's attached to our zoning conditions. So again, we're permitting no more than seven dwelling units, and again, those are upper-story, above any new meeting space, activity space for the veterans. That is just under five units an acre, so within the, the range prescribed by medium-density residential. And then again, capping non-residential uses at 30,000 square feet. And if a site plan is submitted with up to 20,000 square feet or more of non-residential space, then we would perform that TIA at that time. We tried to prohibit those types of uses that would otherwise be permitted in the GC district. That could cause, you know, nuisances to the single-family homes across West Young Street and those to the north as well, such as car dealerships, car washes, tattoo shops, tobacco shops, things that, you know, most people don't want to have, you know, in their backyard or walking distance to their front door. But we did want to keep other uses, you know, for future redevelopment if, if the Joel Fund were to outgrow this site as well, such as, you know, restaurants, retail sales, smaller retail sales, medical office, dental facilities, things that can serve the immediate community that don't create problems for those neighbors. So in conclusion, the rezoning to GC-CZ would allow Brooke and her team to move the Joel Fund from Wake Forest to Roseville, serve more veterans, create a space in the kind of core of Roseville for them to create, meet, interact with one another, and provide, again, an asset to the Roseville community at large. We appreciate your time this afternoon, this evening. If you have questions for either of us, we'd love to hear them, but appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone on the board have any questions for the applicants or staff?
How many folks is the Joel Fund employed?
We currently have four, three full-time, one part-time, and then we work with about nine contract art instructors.
Would they be working out of this facility?
Yes. And I, because I'm nervous, I kind of got a little flustered on what I wanted to say. But I would love to just take another second to kind of talk to you about the vision, if that's okay. 115 is the house that we want to renovate and bring it up to commercial code and use that temporarily as our main operating space. We would currently run all of our programs, just as we are in Wake Forest, out of that space. And then the goal is to reapply for additional funding from Wake County and from other funders that we already work with to do another building that would, on the first floor, be open space with private meeting rooms be the, the residential dwellings. We, a question was brought up about the middle home, and I would love to just let you know. I'm a firm believer in preservation. I love the idea. We've looked into it. I've met with the preserve, with Preservation NC. And unfortunately, the Historical Society won't even touch the house because it's been added on to and renovated. I had them come out and meet with me and tour it, and then I met with a contractor, because originally I wanted that to be the house that we renovated and brought up to code to operate out of. And the contractor said that the amount of money we would have. We found that there's original hardwood floors, original wood paneling, so to save a lot of the parts to use into the new building and then to tell the story. So we have the history from the owners, also from Preserve NC. They gave me all of the information. So we would tell the story on a wall with pictures and explain what was there beforehand as best that we could.
I know that the town had looked into one or two of those homes before.
See if they were on the historical list, but I don't know if it, I know it was one of those or a couple of those in that area, so I'm wondering if it's the same ones that you're talking about.
It's the middle one. It was, it was built in the late 1800s.
Because I, I know that we went through that as well before. So my question, is 115 that you're going to renovate?
Yes.
Is your plan to leave that?
Yes.
It will stay?
Yes. So the plan is, once we do the new building, that would become operation art. We want to have a gallery open to the public with all of our students' artwork, and that would be solely for operation art.
Okay.
Good question, since. My, my question is relative to the well that's on the property. You're gonna be able to work around that and preserve that, since that's one of the only two remaining that are in the town from originally, when it was originally built?
That is our hope. I haven't, we're, we just started working with the architect and the engineer to figure out what all of that will look like.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I even want to keep the shed. I love the shed. Like, that's, they said that's original, too. So I'm trying to preserve as much as I can, just because to my core, that's what I believe in doing, so I'm trying.
Thank you.
Will this have access from the cobblestone that's being developed behind it? Are any of those roads connecting to these properties?
I don't believe so. I know right at the, there's an entrance into cobblestone right at the edge of the property line. But I don't think there's.
I, I'm not sure either, Chair. I'm trying to recall that photo that Mr. Ellebarger had in his presentation. I don't, I don't know if there were any street stubs to either of those three single-family lots. I, I wouldn't be surprised if that wasn't required, since they were single-family at the time of permit approval.
I heard you say this, but I can't recall. Why is the TIA delaying?
Yeah, so in our conditions, we had a development range of 5,000 square feet to 30,000 square feet of non-residential space. When we reached out to a traffic engineer to perform the trip generation memo that's in your packet, we asked them to be as conservative as possible, which meant looking at trips generated by 30,000 square feet of office use, which is the highest trip generator of, you know, your office retail residential uses. And so we, we took a very conservative approach at looking at how much traffic this site could, under the current zoning conditions, generate. But we don't plan to build 30,000 square feet of office here. And the, the trips that would result as, you know, as the sites develop for, you know, art space, art gallery, meeting space for veterans would be a lot lower than, than 30,000 square feet of office. So we spoke with the planning director, Meredith, and, and she was fine with waiving that TIA requirement, conditioned on us adding a condition that we would do a TIA. conditioned on us adding a condition that we would do a TIA if we ever even approached 30,000 square feet of office uses. So that, that condition number three is meant to address or kind of supplement the waiver of the TIA requirement.
Will this meeting space be open to the public or veterans that are the residents or just veterans in general?
Sure. Not to the public, but military-connected. So veterans, guards, family members, but not just, not general public.
Drawing a blank on a question I had now. Oh, I remember my question. We're talking about three properties right now, but you're one organization. Are you going to keep the 115 property separated and then redeed the 111, 113 together? Or does everything come under one umbrella? So when your whole project is all done, you'll have your up to seven-story building with up to 30,000 square feet? I know you said you're not building that much, but you would have all of those as one unit, as one asset?
Are, so are you asking if we would recombine all three properties into one or combine the two properties outside of 115?
I'm just curious how you design, how you plan on kind of consolidating everything since we've got three properties right now. Are you asking for each of them, because you're not asking them to be combined right now, but with each of them, if all three get rezoned, then when you move forward with your project, you'll be combining them all three together? Or just 11 and 113?
So I think the, even if they're not, even if you kept the same lot boundaries, the zoning would kind of encapsulate that whole area. So amongst those three properties, you're looking at a max of seven units and a max of 30,000 square feet of non-residential space. Brooke may have a different answer. I'm not exactly sure how they plan to subdivide or recombine.
So the reason, I guess the context of my question is the concern or thought, the forethinking of in 15 or 20 years, as you mentioned, if you outgrow this and decide to move somewhere else, is there going to be one property that goes on the market? Or does the house on the side go on the market and the rest of the seven-story building go on the market? You know, that's what I'm curious about, to understand what kind of impact the decision has on future preservation of the work that you're doing in the one smaller property on 115, you know, because someone could just come along and take that away. So that's what, that's the context.
Just one.
Okay.
Just, just combined to one lot.
Okay, thank you.
This may be a question for staff, but does that, combining them into one parcel, does that, would that work with the multiple types of different buildings?
The LDO does have provisions for multiple buildings in a, on a multi-lot setting under one ownership. So I don't think that would be a deal breaker, per se. Even if, say, the 115 building were to be renovated and reused as such, but it's required parking, we're on a different lot. I think we could get there through the site development plan process and some of the encouragements of the LDO. But what I was thinking was, the single-family detached is not a permitted use under their use chart. So it could never be sold back again as a house in the future, under this governing zoning. It would also have to go through rezoning.
But it could be a restaurant. It could be turned into, I think it was one of the ones that were still up there.
It could, with the required parking and other, you know, site development aspects that would come along with that. And that's why I just think the big picture is globally develop all three lots as the ultimate development. And really, they probably will not be able to be broken apart in the future because they would be tied with features beyond that existing lot. Or again, if the recombination occurred and then a new subdivision were to try to split that house, that building, off on a new lot, it would have to take its land, its site improvements with it. I mean, just drainage, for instance. We don't know that future, but all of those things are usually done. It's such a tight site, it really, I don't think would work as a multiple lot.
Okay, good, good.
All right. Anyone else have any questions for applicant or staff?
The only other question I had, and it's really irrelevant. I just noticed that you didn't have, you had excluded banks from, from the uses. We recently lost a bank, and we don't really have anything but a credit union here, and that is a downtown area. And I don't know if, if our definition and the ordinance of bank is so broad that it would, it would be worrisome that a drive-through and all that other kind of business would be about it versus a kind of small hole-in-the-wall type of, you know, bank? I don't know if there was anything in particular that you excluded that for.
I think I probably excluded it from a traffic generation perspective. But, and in other neighborhood meetings in Roseville, we have heard that people would rather us not prohibit a bank because of what you just mentioned. So if it's the will of Planning Commission, I don't think we have an issue with adding that as a permitted use so that it would, you know, could remain a possibility in the future.
I don't know either way, because I don't know what kind of an impact a bank would typically have. It's just something I thought. All the other ones I thought in my head made, made pretty decent sense. That one just kind of stuck out. So I don't have, even if we don't make a change, the commissioners can still do that, and they'll probably be the ones who'll make the decision anyway. So I was just curious, thank you. Yep. All right. I have no other questions.
Maybe parking, have you do, have any analysis for parking situation? Or as far as the events, what's the, like, the average size of visitors that you expect for December, or maximum number?
So we haven't performed, well, we haven't received from any of our design professionals, any two-dimensional layouts or sketches quite yet. But we're working on trying to figure out what the layout of the site will be.
So do you currently hold events in Wake Forest? Where do you hold those?
We are at 822 South White Street.
So you hold it, hold them in your office?
So. They're small.
They're small. So the goal is to open this up to Wake County beyond, okay. Is there another one like this in the area?
No, it's needed.
Okay.
In fact, that's a big part of why we have the support we have, is that there's nothing, and there's the highest number of veterans in the county that are not getting services are in this part of the county.
I will say, it's a great location, right off the bypass.
It is. Has Dan been in contact with you? Yes, yes.
I'm sure he has.
Yeah.
Is it possible to ask a more basic question?
Okay, we can have a public comment after the presentation's over. I said, after they're completed their presentation, we'll open for public comment.
Thank you very much.
All right, anyone else have any question for?
No more questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, if you'd like to step up and ask a question?
My name is George Garcia, 524 Everett Road. I'm both DAV and AL member. And the question is, I believe that the Joel Fund is a, is it an NGO?
Nonprofit.
501 NGO?
Yes, sir.
Okay, where's the funding coming from, long-term?
We have funders and we write grants.
I'm sorry?
Should I come up?
Yeah, please.
That's a great question, thank you. A lot of the funding currently is coming from Wake County to go towards the land. We have a private funder for the land itself. And the majority of our funding is mixed. So it's grants from foundations, from local donors.
So that will be disclosed at that time, the private funding?
Yes, it's always a part of our tax documents. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, is anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Please help yourself.
My mother, my name is Betty Freeman, 524 Everett Road. My mother wrote the history of this area. The 113, Young Street, that house used to be the Stagecoach Inn and Tavern, the reason this town exists. So tear it down, parts of it inside are still the original building. So tear it down. Does that mean everybody's old, anything, his history's going to get torn down? Because that is the oldest building in this town. That house was built, that original house was a log cabin, 1773, before this country was a country. And Ms. Emily built the rest of that around that original log cabin. So parts of it are still inside. That was the Stagecoach Inn and Tavern that Stagecoach tripped between Richmond, Virginia and Charleston, South Carolina. That's it.
Thank you. All right. With hearing public comments and reports from staff and the applicant, staff have anything else at this point?
No, that concludes staff's presentation. Just here for questions.
All right. Is the, is there any more discussion from the board? If not, the floor is open for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve REZ 2307.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I do.
You're opposed, okay, all right. Please let that be noted, so that was a.
Three to one abstaining.
Oh, abstaining, okay. Three, three to one vote. Motion carries. All right, up next is.
Sorry, why are you abstaining?
Why are you abstaining? Okay. We, you need to vote one way or the other. So, yes.
No.
Vote. So why don't we take a vote again? Let's go ahead and.
So the motion and second carries. All right, so all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? We have two that are opposed. So the vote would be three, three for, two against. All right. Up next is the rezoning 24, REZ 24-02, the rezoning for Hills at Harris Creek.
Thank you. Good evening. This, as Chair Moss said, this is Hills at Harris Creek. It has a new case number, REZ 2402. This piece of property in Ellis Development Group, Ellis Developments Group may look familiar to you. Back in January 2022, they submitted an application, a rezoning application labeled as MA 2201. It was for 320 residential lots, single-family attached and detached housing, plus approximately 150,000 square feet of commercial development. The applicant chose to scale back a bit and change that application. And it was given a new case number, REZ 2303. That application included 270 residential lots, again, single-family attached and detached housing, plus an approximately two-acre commercial component. That rezoning request was denied in November, I believe, at the November Town Board meeting. So the applicant has come back with a new rezoning application for about a maximum of 225 single-family detached residential lots. So the site is about 116 acres located on the north side of Mitchell Mill Road. The current zoning is Wake County Residential 30. And the applicant is proposing to change the zoning to residential medium conditional zoning district. So with that, conditional zoning district is a concept site plan that we saw on the opening slide. Again, that has a maximum of 225 single-family detached lots. In addition, the applicant has other proposed conditions of approval, including an affordable housing donation of $20,000 to Homes for Heroes or similar organizations serving veterans. There, including a pollinator garden, specifics on recreation amenity timing, commitments to transportation improvements that are in the traffic impact analysis. They are committing to a 2,000-square-foot minimum size for the homes and building foundations, the stem wall of a crawl space-style foundation of at least 18 inches to give that appearance of a crawl space, whether or not it has a crawl space. They're including driveway access to neighboring properties that are homes that are staying in place. And they also have provisions for greenways and a shared use path. And the applicant has a presentation that they will give following staff's presentation, and they can go into some more detail on the conditions. So as per our comprehensive plan, future land use map, as Mike mentioned in the presentation for 111, 113, and 115, there's quite a bit of this orange area in our future land use map, and that is medium-density residential that is defined as predominantly single-family detached housing with other housing types included, like townhomes, multifamily, and then some cases of non-residential development. Our community transportation plan shows Mitchell Mill Road as a four-lane divided section with curb and gutter, bike lanes and a sidewalk. And our CTP also shows a proposed connection going through the site towards the northern end. Our greenway plan has a greenway network surrounding the site, but the applicant is including some greenway sections through the property. The firm DRMP, Sean Brennan is present this evening. DRMP was formerly known as Ramey Kemp. That might sound more familiar to you. Ramey Kemp or DRMP performed the traffic impact analysis on the town's behalf. And if you have any questions about the traffic impact analysis that was included in your packet, Sean is available to answer those questions. And just a note, with the max of 225 single-family detached lots, the cumulative daily trips for the project would be just a little over 2,000. So staff does recommend approval of this request. We'll touch on consistency with the comprehensive plan. First, the housing type, single-family detached housing is the predominant housing type in medium-density residential. And so that is consistent with our future land use map. And the roadway network that is shown in the concept plan is consistent with our community transportation plan. And it is worth noting that the applicant's efforts to revise this application and the concept site plan to better fit the town of Roseville's current policy direction for the location of townhomes, I just wanted to make sure that was noted. We have heard from several commissioners on the town board that they are most comfortable with townhomes being located in walkable areas such as closer to downtown, in our downtown core. So in this case, the applicant in previous applications showed townhomes, and now they're only showing single-family detached housing. So, let's see, I will pull up the applicant's presentation. And do you all have any questions for staff before the applicant gives their presentation?
Anyone have a question?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jason Fister. You might recognize me, I'm the Vice President Development for Ellis Developments Group. Wanted to go through, I'll try to, we have a presentation to go through the project. I'll try to avoid being repetitive of Meredith's presentation, but wanted to make sure that we were able to answer any questions and kind of go through the evolution of where we are. Like I said, the main, what we're trying to do here is go to use the medium-density conditional zoning, which would allow us to do up to 225 single-family houses. That's a density still under two units an acre, and the minimum lot size would be 8,000 square feet. There's a range of lot sizes throughout the project. And we're using the cluster development option under, what's available under the LDO, which requires up to 40% open, open space preservation, which in this case, I think is 47 acres. This is a general overview of the site. What we tried to do, obviously with the last rezoning, the townhomes were the real concern. There was a small piece of commercial, which was not really the issue. But what we've done is, like Meredith said, remove the townhomes, but still try to preserve the benefits of the prior plan and really kind of turn some of the challenges of this site. and really kind of turn some of the challenges of this site, particularly that Duke power easement, which is, how many acres? It's a twenty-acre, you know, it's a significant power line. And then there's a significant amount of wetlands on the site. So what we've tried to do is design around that and turn those development challenges into features. Like Meredith said, we are... What the zoning we're trying to get to is a medium density residential, which is consistent with the future land use plan for this area and consistent with other projects that are, have already been approved and are in the development process in the surrounding area of Mitchell Mill Road. I want to go through and explain this site, and Keith, if you could come up. This is Keith Robbins. He's our land planner for this site. He can help me describe some of the features. But what we've got here, I want to talk about the shared use path. What we tried to do, the original, what was submitted in our original application was this red greenway path. As Meredith mentioned, the town's greenway plan kind of goes through this back area here. But what we were able to do is incorporate that into our project and kind of turn this wetlands area into a feature. So we've had to be very careful as to where we go with the greenway plan, given the power line easement and also the wetlands. So our original design was just this red loop, which is going to be a public greenway as defined in the LDO. The Parks and Rec Committee, through the TRC process, this is our amenity, pool amenity center here. It's centralized in the middle of the community. They asked if there was a way that we could connect the greenway to that amenity, which we were happy to do. However, the only way to do that would be to go, to take the path, which is a ten-foot wide asphalt path. We'd have to take that into the Duke power easement here, which is the yellow sections. Within that, there are requirements in the LDO for every so many feet, you have to have benches and different kind of amenities for it to be considered a public greenway. We can't do that within the Duke power easement. So that's the reason it's called a shared use path. But in terms of look and feel, it's going to be the same kind of contiguous ten-foot asphalt path that is designed to connect to not only our amenity center, but also, you know, potential future development to the, I guess, would that be the east?
The other issue that came up is that a small triangle piece north of the Duke easement is actually a type-two buffer. And so as that site gets smaller, we actually don't have enough room for the pathway and the buffer to share that same space. So by necessity, to protect the buffer and future land uses on either side of that, the multi-use path slides down at the edge of the Duke greenway, at the Duke power easement, and comes across and then comes down. It should also be noted that that is also consistent with the town bike plan. So that blue line actually connects further north, or should I say on the top of the page, to an existing development where it also has that same bike lane road. So we're looking at creating pieces that eventually will be the mat station of your town bike plan through here, through this area. And the final area is the bike lane along Mitchell Mill Road is also consistent with the bike plan. And we're looking to plan that piece and then wait for the rest of the development around to connect it. So we actually have a bike network. The greenway looks very circuitous, and it's mainly because we wanted to have a greenway that enhanced nature and gave a view of nature without destroying it and that without creating impacts. So we skirt the wetland and the Duke power easement to give great views of nature without actually causing wetland impacts. So it has that look, so we actually cross, look at nature from three different sides on it. And again, it's consistent with the plan where we connect to the top and bottom of the pages as part of the greenway network that goes from there. And the project to the top of the page, which is actually, I think, west, actually has a public greenway. And so again, we're creating the pieces of a system, waiting for the rest of the development to catch up so the system can be built. So again, we're deliberately looking to create pieces of a larger network now, knowing that in the future of the town, the system will be there for you. Again, some standard views of what the greenway is. This slide's just important to go through the town code issues. The first three areas, the pool, cabana, the recreation park, and the playground are the town required issues. And then we're exceeding those with the fenced dog park area at number four, and then the pollinator garden, which is under the Duke easement itself. That'll be actually up to four acres. And we've talked to Duke about this. And the idea is, as long as it's at grade, we can come in, plant wildflowers, let them grow, and then manage them very carefully. So there'll be no raised beds, no other issues that Duke would find to be an impediment to their power line. And then maybe once every year, we could mow it, and then again, regrow. So it's taking kind of a leftover area and creating an asset and also creating something that we all know we need more bees and birds and help, help the habitat of this area grow and be more stable. So we're very grateful that Duke has agreed to that plan as well. And so we're, we think it's a great asset for it. The other thing that we also want to point out is roads A and B, we have adjacent neighbors. And so we're building them two driveways. So the driveways would be private easements within this development, but would give access to the two neighbors there. Part of this project removed something called Rock Farm Road, which is a private street. And as a result, we're creating new driveways for them.
Yeah, this is Rock Farm Road here. And actually, the driveway A is Alan Watkins, who is the current landowner. He's here tonight if you have any questions for him. But these two properties, A and B, currently access Mitchell Mill Road through this private road, that's Rock Farm Road. However, it's going to, it's currently located too close to this, our main entrance here. So DOT is going to require us to, the road is currently on the property in question. We have to close this road. So instead, there's going to be private access driveways that connect and provide access to these two homes through private easement. And that's a condition, specifically the condition, the way it's worded, is that we will not, we're not able to close Rock Farm Road until these two houses have, those two private driveways are constructed and have unfettered access through the development. Just some other examples of what we're thinking in terms of the amenities. Just wanted to point out kind of a couple of things with this proposal. You know, the, we think it increases the connectivity and the traffic flow in this area. And Sean is here to talk more about the traffic improvements as necessary. It also preserves open space using the cluster development. And we think it's also important to point out that there's quite a wide variety of lot sizes within this project so that you can have a variety of price points and housing styles within. It's not going to be, you know, kind of two hundred and twenty-five cookie cutter homes that are the same. You're going to have quite a, quite a bit of variety throughout the project. And with that, happy to answer any questions anyone has?
I have one question with respective, with respect to the, the north, that would be the...
North is the...
Yeah, that would be the western entrance that's closest to the personal residence. In your last plan, that was a right turn only in and no left turn in. Does that still say the same?
Yes, it does.
And the homeowners are aware that they have to go all the way down to the eastern entrance and go all the way through the neighborhood to get into their house if they're coming from the west? I just want to make sure I understand how that plan works out. That's what they're going to have to do. They're going to have to drive all the way through the neighborhood if they're coming from Raleigh.
Right.
Okay.
So this would be, so coming down, this is Jonesville here. This is Rock Farm Road. These are the two, let me go back to the...
So the upper entrances are right in, right out? That was part of the TIA?
Right. So there's no left-hand turn into that entrance? So if they're coming from, let's just make it easy, from Jonesville Road, then they would have to go past their house all the way down to that second entrance and then come all the way back up through all those, okay?
And that's detailed in the TIA?
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't in this packet. That was in the last one. And I just wanted to make sure that was still something carrying over in this one.
And part of the reason for that is, you know, obviously, we, we can only improve the sections of roads.
Oh, I remember, yeah, yeah, no.
So we don't have enough...
We didn't have enough room to make a left turn?
Left, the taper, left turn lane in. So, yeah, so that's...
A lot of this, the back half is, since you looked at this plan earlier, the back half of that project really hasn't changed that much.
Right.
We're just really eliminated the commercial and the townhomes. Be more consistent with the commissioner's opinion.
Yeah, and the only, the only other thing, I don't know if the commissioners will pick on this. I, you know, and I was part of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board that worked a lot on the greenway system. And one of the things we're really trying to avoid is having public greenways going through private neighborhoods. So, so I don't know exactly where you're squeezing things in on the north side of this. But if you go back to your greenway plan, I know you've got, I know there's a lot of swamp, and I get all of that. But, but that kind of horseshoe shape you have, it would, it would seem, and I know this one highlights that nice little loop in that park area, and I know what you were trying to do, and I'm not taking anything away from that. It's fine if you keep that as an interior private community path. I just think that the public greenway should just go straight across the property because that avoids the public interacting with a private community. And that's one of the things, like I said, we've been trying to modify with the way we're planning our greenways so that we don't have, you know, public people, you know, constantly in people's backyards and going through people's, you know, neighborhoods. It's just, it's, we actually have lost residents because of neighborhoods that were built with that. So, so, and I know it would require a boardwalk and a bunch of this and a bunch of that. And I don't, it might even have to require some other kind of permission from, from Army Corps of Engineers. I understand that, and I know the complication you're going to have with that is they're not likely going to approve that because it's connecting from nowhere to nowhere, and they don't like connect, they don't like honoring, you know, what is it, the green or the wetlands exceptions when something's going nowhere.
Yeah, I think...
I know, so I get all your challenges with that. And I don't, I don't even, I can't, and I even hesitate to bring it up because I can't even offer you a solution to that. All I'm going to say is that it goes through the neighborhood, and it's not ideal in that respect. Not ideal. So, so that's, that's...
I mean, you've actually hit all the issues that we're dealing with on how to design this to make it work. And so what we tried to do by staying on the other side of the power easement and that triangle up there, there are actually no houses there.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, this, this, it's hard to see here, but this, this wetland area that's completely undevelopable goes back quite a ways, so this is always going to be protected.
The goal is, I think, to avoid going through everyone's backyards because I live in Wake Forest, and when we take our dog through the greenway there, it's an event. And, you know, it's not very pleasant. So I think this plan only has three or four houses that actually have direct connection with the greenway. I think only two or three at the top. And then by going through the middle, through that park there, that saves more connections. And then we actually, that loop around there is actually the loop around the stormwater pond as it pops out and then comes down.
Yeah, I just think if I were to be doing this to stay as out of people's faces as possible, I would just put the nearest side on the outside of those houses. Just to kind of make it very clear that this is public and this is private. Because even though I understand what you're saying, you're coming into that loop only affecting one house or right next to two or three houses, you're still, you're still effectively in the community. You know, you're in that big roundabout. And if they, and I won't be surprised with the way some of society and culture goes that that whole cul-de-sac gets really friendly, has big bum parties, you know, and have these big parties out there, close down the whole circuit, circle down there, and now the public people can't get through. You know, so it's stuff like that, that is one of the reasons why we strive so hard to separate private and public amenities. So that's just something to consider, you know, with that.
Our original design here actually had us going all the way down and hugging the property line to the back. But it actually was, it was Eddie in the Parks Department that, after talking through it with him, he actually liked this idea better. So we worked, we redesigned it to incorporate it into a park.
Yeah, and that may just, you know, may bring up some of those other points that he might not have realized with respect to that private, you know, because if that community does close down that circle for a private community park, then, you know, event, then the public can't get through. So, and I can understand why the near side would be less, you know, attractive because there's so many more homes that would, that it would be going on, which is why I think going around the backside of the other one, you know, you can still run your connector through there. I mean, you know, you still have those options. I'm just really picking on the public versus the private part and the concerns that I have about...
I mean, this is the great challenge of a public greenway within a private community is how to find that balance that makes it work, given all the constraints we have here of extra wetlands and rock and slope and steepness.
Right.
And we don't want to build retaining walls around the back of those houses to put a greenway in because then it's not a greenway anymore.
Well, you know, and then one other, again, I'm just, I'm just spitballing, you know, but just other ideas is to create an easement across that wetlands and only, and build stub outs and then have the town have the ability to go back when the rest of the network gets put in place and put in that boardwalk. So then you have a connecting greenway when the other things on the, on the west and east of your property come through, and then just give the town that easement, and then just have your connector going through the neighborhood so that's all just private connecting through your acute loop and all that kind of business.
Yeah. That's a good idea, and I think this area here, I mean, in a perfect world, if this greenway was already built out, we'd have a much...
Oh, it'd be much easier to get to the Army Corps of Engineers to approve you to go through the wetlands. So I guess what, best way to just summarize what my point is here is, when you go, you know, if you get to the town commissioners, I would show them three options of that greenway path. Give them the one that, you know, give them the one that Eddie kind of discouraged you to use. Give them this one, and then, and then give them what the, give them one with the private access easement that's not built out, that looks really stupid because you've got a half a greenway built and the rest of it green, and you've got a gap. And just give the, and then the town commissioners make the decision for you.
Yeah, like I was...
I mean, that's a good idea. I think it's something we could go back to the developer and go back to the town and staff and see what they think about it.
Yeah, I just, I just think that, yeah, yeah.
This may be a question for staff, but I think, hadn't the town been requiring that the greenways be constructed? So the option of dedicating an easement to be built later, I think maybe kind of had the question.
Oh, is that off, is that out of the question now? News to me, I guess. I missed that one.
I would just say that would be above and beyond, something like the idea that you were just bringing up. They're, they're running the greenway through. They're building it a hundred percent. But doing those stubs and maybe even putting an easement through the HOA land for, you know, in ten years when the tenure changes and there's greenway on both sides to your point, then it makes a lot more sense to do it, and maybe the Corps would approve it, so, yeah.
Yeah, and the problem is with, we already have a substantial amount of wetlands impacts as it is. Even those stubs, which you think is just a few feet of asphalt, is a significant impact. So I think, given that...
Well, they're in your plan already, though. I mean, I'm not talking about changing anything in your plan. I'm just saying, just don't...
Basically, if I understand you correctly, basically, you'd want an easement to kind of connect this loop in the future. I don't think, like I said, I think that's a good idea, and I don't think we would have a problem with that. This is all going to be owned, that's going to be HOA common area. So you're not dealing with, you know, multiple homeowners. I mean, that's something that we could certainly, you know, talk through. And I think it, it would certainly kind of just be on paper, an easement in the future, but we can certainly...
I just, I just think even if you just leave this as it is, public, right? But then give the, they give the town the easement. Then when the town wants to come back and do that, then they can, you know, give you all that stuff back and make it private because it makes more sense for the public just to go straight by and not have anything to worry about. It's just, it's just options, just...
I mean, it's a good thought, and I think it's something that we'll need to talk to staff and see if they'll support it. I think it's a good idea. Because we are under the obligation to build it.
Right, right.
That's why it's the red line that looks like it is now.
Right, and I'm just thinking, again, you know, if the easement is acceptable, then you'll save that much more money by not having to build that whole horseshoe and only one, build one internal... and only one, build one internal, private connector to the outside. So that's where I think, you know, you've just got a lot of options, I think, to talk about.
Something that we need to pursue a little more and see how feasible that is, given the constraints that we have.
Right.
The conditions of building.
I have a question. On the power line, what do y'all see in terms of maintenance? Is the HOA gonna maintain underneath there, or are you gonna leave that for the utility company to maintain?
It, it will be, it's owned by the HOA, but Duke's responsible. Actually, Duke won't let us maintain it. They're, it's, it's an easement, but they have full ownership and full control over it.
It will not allow you to maintain?
They prefer to maintain it themselves.
They're gonna come in with scorched earth and put chemical under it. I think if you went back and talked to them, if you want a real meadow and you want to do pollinators, it's really easy to put a grain drill and run and, and plant that in the middle of it and then have it maintained by HOA versus waiting for Duke. Because Duke's gonna only come about every three years, let the stuff come up and chemically handle it. They're not gonna mow it or anything. If you planted all of that whole strip in native gra, you know, grass and native, like they have at Horseshoe Park or, you know, native wildflowers, you could have a beautiful 10-acre piece that's less maintenance and more attractive for the community, and a much bigger, you know, piece that's not gonna require a whole lot of work. I think if you presented that to Duke, I think you'd have a better piece. Because you're not gonna have something that grows up and then gets cut down for the community. Just a thought.
When we've talked to Duke, a couple of the issues is, the idea of wildflowers really works well with them. They'll come in and actually with bushhogs and mow, mow this thing with some pretty serious equipment and then use chemicals. So they don't want any trees growing or any, anything, any structure.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying if you go with a complete pollinator, there's.
I know, it's a good idea.
But there's, there's 30 or 40 native things that can be seeded and put in there that are not structured, that are not trees. They're just sunflowers and black-eyed susans and coreopsis that need bomb that are all native to North Carolina. It could be stuck in there along with little blue stem, and all that stuff would stay small. And it would look like a meadow, and it could be mowed or even burned, you know, once a year, and it'll come right back without anything. If, if you don't maintain it and don't cut it down, your pine trees and your gum trees and your blackberries are gonna come up, and that's what they're gonna want to spread, so, yeah. There's some way you could go in there, and you wouldn't have to do anything for prep except bush hog it and then put a grain drill on top, no till work, you know, to do the whole thing in that. If you present it the right way, there's no earth disturbance.
Yeah, and, and I guess I should clarify in our discussions with Duke. Duke will maintain it sort of if, but it's kind of a concurrent where they'll allow us and the HOA to, to maintain it if we want. But the understanding is, and basically, the, the permission for the pollinator garden is, you know, Bruce at Duke has basically said if, if they need to clear it for maintenance and whatnot, you know, they'll, they'll do that. But they're, we could certainly maintain it as well.
What I'm saying, it'll keep, be kept low, and they won't have to come in and apply chemicals. Because if they apply the chemicals on each side of that and there's any drift, that's gonna get back and kill the pollinator stuff. So, so you can do yourself, and the stuff, and it would be very inexpensive for the HOA to bush hog once a year in the fall or what have you and let it come back.
I think that's our goal, and as we move forward on this, we'll.
And if they had a, they had a problem in the middle of the summer, and it's just wildflowers, it can still run right over it. I mean, it's, it's most of.
What we also know is that Duke has told us that they're looking to replace all of those towers down there as well. So we're not really sure their plans on what they're doing.
It's the timing of it, and what, and.
But we, you know, we clearly want to have something that is simple, easy, beneficial to nature, and have a working, have the HOA have a working arrangement with Duke. So they don't come in with lots of chemicals and, and kind of nuke everything for no good reason.
Well, the only two ways is to either plant something to keep the, the light off and to stop the germination of those undesirable gum trees and blackberries, or mow it. That's, or do your chemicals every two or three years.
Yeah, I think we, the HOA would need to mow it every season.
Yeah, I think you could do that.
Mary, is that something that could be put into a recommendation, that the HOA mows the, the power line if, if Duke will allow it?
That would, that would be part of the agreement that we will work on with Duke.
Yeah, because we've gotta have.
I think that's something that could be put into a motion that would satisfy that.
Sure.
To mow and maintain.
Yeah, because I'll be part of the HOA documents when we get there.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have none.
Is it possible?
Any other? After the presentation, please. After their presentation.
They have the same situation.
Well, after their presentation, we'll, we'll.
Is there any more questions?
Is any more question for staff? Okay.
Thank you for the suggestions, and we'll see what we can do to incorporate that.
All right, thank you.
Staff has no further comments, but we're certainly available for your questions.
Okay, I guess can we open the floor for a public comment? All right, speak now if you'd like. Was there any, no one signed up?
No one signed up.
Okay.
Hey, my name is George Garcia. We have a similar situation with a right-of-way for Wake Electric, about two acres that we put on perennial pollinating plants. And we mow it every so often. When you mow in it, you regenerate it. Number one, and number two is you keep all the trees and, you know, pines or whatever that would interfere with the maintenance of the power line, and it, it works beautiful. We've been doing it now for four years. Yeah, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that has any comments? All right, is there any other discussion from the board? Hearing no further discussion, the floor is open for a motion. Recommend approval? Okay, we have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
One second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and you voted for. All right, so it would be three, four, two against. Motion carries. All right, thank you. Onto the next item is Communications. Planning Director's report.
Sure. We often update you on your previous recommendations. And the Harris Creek Farms case is scheduled to be at the next town board meeting. That's next week, April 2nd. So I don't have an update on that yet. We'll have an update after that meeting. And also, at our last meeting, we talked about, let's see. The development process and putting together a flow chart. And so far, we have put together a table of the development process, and it looks like Mike is really excited to talk about it.
So, before we jump into this, we should introduce our new planner.
Yeah, yeah.
Tanner here has, handing out the, the handout to you all. He helped develop this, this week for us. So this is step one in providing you all a, a graphic and some terminology, et cetera, to about the development process as a whole. We do want to do more of a flow chart, which would be more graphic oriented. And there's a lot of avenues that development process can go. There's several if-this, then-that happens scenarios and situations when you're trying to express the overall development process. And the two big avenues are your single-family or townhome residential projects, and then kind of all the other ones, the non-residential, including apartments. So those are two different avenues, but they all do follow most of the same steps. So this graphic is to help you all and also understand kind of where do you all sit as the planning board in this big picture. That's what, what the arrow there is and the highlight on the rezoning. So again, typically, the first step in any of these operations is the rezoning step, to go through the legislative process to request, to change the zoning and/or annex into the town limits. As so many of the projects that have come through the last years and really the history of Roseville is that the town grows with every one of these projects because most of the property is not in the town limits. So there's a voluntary annexation petition that goes along with the rezoning request. But we do spend 95% of the time, right, talking about the rezoning request and especially the project that is at the heart of the rezoning request, because that's what really matters. So, we've got noted here, and I'll go through this very quickly. And again, you all have an AL copy, and you can shoot us emails or questions or whatever. And again, we can pick this up next month as well. Typically, most projects do show enough project specificity that we can vet and determine if a traffic impact analysis will be triggered by it. And so usually, traffic impact analysis is one of those many attachments that go along with the rezoning application like you have in your packet tonight for the, the second case that we heard. The next step is preliminary subdivision plat. And again, that's presuming that it's a large chunk of land that the developer wishes to cut into multiple pieces of property. And what goes off, often with that is development of brand-new streets or right-of-ways. So you put in new, brand-new right-of-ways, that's obviously breaking up the big chunk of land into lots of littler chunks of land. That is preliminary subdivision. It is a engine, it's a surveyed but not fully engineered, I like to say, two-dimensional division of the land, showing general things like right-of-ways, all of the lots that are proposed, major features like presumed stormwater areas, public parks, and things of that nature would be shown. And all the open spaces that the developer has shown the general land planning idea that they're gonna go here. So you do get a general picture. It is much more than a concept plan like that rides with most of our rezonings. That is unengineered and unspecific, hasn't been reviewed for subdivision minimum standards. But a preliminary subdivision plat is that. That goes through, it is a non-constructible plan set, which is a good thing to understand. Nobody can build right out of a preliminary subdivision. You get that approved, you're moving to the next steps, which we'll get to in a second. It is reviewed fully by the Technical Review Committee of the Town or TRC, and then it is signed by the town only, generally. Only the town signs that. But that does not mean that all the other review groups of the TRC, the staff, have not reviewed and approved of it. The next step would be subdivision improvement or construction drawings, as we call it. Now, this is the fully engineered, three-dimensional, above-ground, underground, stormwater, et cetera, plans. This is a constructible plan set. So after that is approved, the developer does go break ground and builds the infrastructure that's going with the development. And again, this can be both single-family or townhome residential, like we're used to, or commercial. So the Wallbrook project, for instance, did a 15-lot preliminary subdivision plat and then is doing multiple construction drawings, for instance. So that's a commercial subdivision in all, in all senses, except for the townhome component. But, um, but so that's, you know, preliminary subdivision and construction drawings applies to both residential and a non-residential. So after the construction drawings, we move to final subdivision plats. And generally, this is done in phases, because most, especially your single-family, your townhome developments are phased. They do not build all, all at once. They record certain lots and start going on the actual physical construction of those as they build more infrastructure. They build out the subdivision or the, or the development. So final plats come next. They are non-construction, they are reviewed by TRC, and they're reviewed by the town. But they're reviewed, they were, they're assigned by some other entities as well. Mr. Moss could tell you ad nauseam all the state laws that govern what has to go on one of those final plats that gets signed and all the signatories that have to do that. Now, the next site development plan, as it says there, non-residential only. So this is where development moves to, for apartments, which are viewed from this scope as non-residential and all your real general commercial type of uses, a bank, a restaurant, a shopping center, et cetera. They all process a site development plan. That, too, is a constructible document, is fully reviewed by the TRC staff, and it gets signed by the city, but often Raleigh Utilities and Wake County Environmental for the watershed review for the stormwater ponds. And that would be only if through the subdivision process, those two entities didn't already vet that. So one example of this would be like Wallbrook. They're gonna do a communal pond, and they're going to stub utilities to every one of those outlots. But then some bank's gonna come along and buy that property. It's already got the infrastructure put in. They're just gonna get, do a site development plan for their bank, let's say. And, and, and the, the traffic study's already been done for that project. So all of those things are behind them. They're just gonna do a site development plan for the bank. They're not gonna build a pond, they're not gonna extend utilities, because all of that was done by the master developer, right? There are some projects around town where that doesn't happen, even though it's a, it's a recorded lot, it's been sitting there for 20 years, and then they go and they want to put a doctor's office on there. But they have to build a pond on site, which requires Wake County review for the stormwater control. They might have to extend utilities down the street because those utilities will never run down the street, for instance, so. So after we get to that point, either residential or non-residential, when those plans are done and they want to start moving dirt, we have a pre-construction meeting. And we have that with all entities involved, from the city, Raleigh Water, the DOT, the developers, all the people on the developer side, all their contractors or subcontractors, et cetera. The town infrastructure inspector, the town engineer. We get up to 20 people or more in a room at a big old table. And you look at the plans, and you talk, and you set up things like basis of communication, and who's gonna deal with complaints and who's gonna route that, et cetera. You obviously find out when they're gonna start construction. You talk about things like construction trailers. You talk about where the employee's going to park. You talk about, is there gonna be a washout? Where's the washout going to be? Because we don't want mud on the, on the public street, because that's gonna draw a complaint, and we're gonna, you know, come after you. So all of those little nuances come into effect there, and we have that meeting, hopefully get everybody on the same page. There's also a requirement for a pre-permitting meeting. So this is when the developer wants to submit building permits and wants to go vertical. Wake County Permits is our partner here in the building permit world. And so they like to have, again, all hands on deck, let's have a meeting once and get on the same page before you start submitting building permits. Some of these projects will be doing multiple building permits over and over again, especially like apartment complexes where they're doing eight buildings, let's say. Get it right the first time, right, and then it's very easy from there. So it's one of these, let's, let's get our stuff together and let's talk about it at the beginning of the project. So two of these pre-meetings would be held. And then you move into the building and the trade permitting portions. And this is where you submit the permit, it gets reviewed, it gets issued, they do the work, multiple inspections occur. And this is all your interior work generally, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, et cetera. And those are non-stop for the life of a project. Either one single building or an apartment building type where every unit has to go through its own permit inspections, et cetera. Plus, again, this covers the, the single-family residential. Every home, every townhome goes through its own unique building permit, separate permit for every single one of those. And each one of those permits can last six months as you're building a home from start to certificate of occupancy. So whether it's not tradition, or, uh, non-residential or residential, the end result is a certificate of occupancy or a certificate of completion of the permitting process. And then people can move in, or the businesses can open the doors to the public. So that is the beginning from when you all see a rezoning kind of, all the way through permitting, and we have new residents or new businesses here. So, take some time over the next month, whatever, look at this. If anything didn't sink in, or anything could be fleshed out a little more simple, a little more detailed, please let us know. And, and again, we're gonna work on making a more graphically oriented one, like with color. We know it works, it's just, um, I'm, I'm technically deficient in some of those things. But we're gonna, we're gonna get that, and again, all of this information, eventually, our goal is to put it on the website so that we can always reference it for you all and the public and say, "Look at here." And we want to get into the, the fashion of telling, like you all, this is where this project sits in the step, rezoning. Now, it's, it's gonna be repetitive for you, the planning board, because that's where it sits. But should there ever be a conversation, we want to be able to take one of these and go, "This is where this project sits." It's right in the middle. What's at this step? Final subdivision plat, or it's at construction drawing, or it's at pre-construction. And kind of move that needle along for every project so that we can just share that information, be very transparent as to where these projects are going along. So we have a lot of work to do on the, on the town webpage. That development map is a little crude right now. It could be a lot better. So we're working on doing that, plus all of our project development pages. Have you ever noticed there's a little flow chart at the top, which kind of tells you benchmarks as to what happened? Make that a little bit more so that maybe it stops on the current stage, and you can see what happened before. But also, it's all, kind of the, the finger's always on the pulse of exactly where it's at. That would be one of my goals, is to try to have that done. So there wouldn't be a guessing. If you know the name of the project, you go to the webpage, you could, as soon as, as soon as you can, find out exactly where it's at. Hopefully answer that first question, which is probably, what's going on now?
The only thing I want to add with respect to the website that I'll say, and I don't know if anybody else feels the same, the only thing that is hard to use is trying to find just a very simple, most recent plan for a project. So I don't know if it's, if it's not too much work when you come on to a product, one of the project pages. It's, like you said, I follow the thermometer across the top and the listing chronologically of the documents that get added. But somewhere off to the side, if there could just be one, a one-page PDF pulled that has the most recent, you know, aerial concept drawing, I personally would feel more confident knowing that I'm looking at something most recent than trying to find through all of the, match this page and match that page and these separate documents that, I appreciate how and why they're laid out, but at one given moment, one project is so far in a different place and organized so differently than the other, it's hard to really find the one document that says, here's the most recent concept plan that I'm most likely gonna see a map of at the next meeting. If there's a way we can just pull that out, then I can find all the other details, you know. It would be nice to have them too, you know, how many townhomes and how many, you know. Each of those packets that we see always has that one page somewhere that has the summary in the map. If that could be pulled out off to the side, that would be to me very helpful.
And so you're speaking about every project individually.
Yeah.
Let me, Wallbrook. If you said, I just want a big image of Wallbrook and to know exactly where it's at today.
Yes, well, not really. It doesn't even have to be where, yeah, the most recent renderings of...
In the development process, where is it at? And, right, as they move through these plans...
No, I'm not even worried about that. I'm just talking of, like, what we see when we come into the public input sessions and they just have these maps, here's what our plan is.
Okay.
You know, just have one of those with each of the developments so that when you come in there, you can just click right on that map and then just visually, like, start looking at it. And then you start digging into all the documents of the things you might be concerned about.
Okay.
That's just the way I kind of use that page. I don't know how other people use it, but that's the one thing I look for the most is that map.
I think especially a lot of the larger rezonings will have a nice illustrative image of the project. We could post that and keep that, again, that'll live through most of the project. You know, things get tweaked when you go through subdivision.
Yeah, yeah.
There was a street here, but no, that actually couldn't be built and so it moved, you know. But you would get the general sense of that project. That would always be there. And again, we could post the who, the what, the when, the where, the why, you know, 120 of this, 200 of this.
Yeah, just the real basic stuff.
Yeah, right, the basics in the middle, okay.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe what you described is more of the overall subdivision site plan. That would have your site that on it. That's, you know, approved pretty early on and that's, everything is based off of and they all get phased later. And then you get to multiple, if you have that big master overall would...
Yeah, yeah.
Let you know what the whole project's...
I think I hear what you're saying. Let us think about how we could represent that. And my concern is it would be, it might be inaccurate a year later when the construction drawings have changed something big and still wouldn't be representative. And to have the developer revise that illustrative, because again, we want to look at a nice, pretty picture. A black and white one's gonna be a little bit drawl. Yeah, but maybe there's some...
And again, you know, that might be one of those things where it's really just a simple disclaimer that's very clearly stated at the bottom of the page. This is as of this date, concept only, you know. Something that, because by the time things actually get past us, I mean, maybe that's something that could just then be taken down because it's already passed. Once it's approved, maybe you take it down and then no one ever has to worry about confusing it. But during the process, because I know I struggle, I waste too much time looking through each of those documents thinking, is this one gonna have a concept plan on it? Is this one gonna have the greenways on it? Is this one gonna be all just piping and sewage? You know what I'm saying? It's like, I can never remember which one to grab. So that's just very helpful.
Yeah. And again, maybe y'all could help us write a little primer on maybe even how to use these development pages. Six bullets of some basic stuff like that. You know, if you're looking for this, go to the one called X. And again, we need to be maybe more consistent with our naming nomenclature about so that if you're looking for concept plan, that, those words are always there in the link. So that you always know that's where I want to go if I want to see...
And I'm trying to, I'm trying to look for that too. So, you know, I'm trying to find that as well and I might be missing it, but that's, that would be helpful too if there was, if there isn't already a consistent naming convention that we could, you know, that you can give us those three little key words, you know.
Yes, right. These are, if you want this, go here.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Because I might be missing it, so I apologize if I am, but...
I think, I think most of the public would probably benefit more from that overall concept plan rather than getting in the weeds of the construction drawings and final plats.
I mean, I think you're right. That would accomplish 90% of the seekers. They're just looking for that big picture.
Yeah, most people just want to know, hey, what's going on here and how many lots?
Right.
How many roads? How many parks? You know, that general overall site plan.
I'm always so concerned about transparency being accurate and getting the leaders up there at a certain time and they don't care about that. They care about the big pictures.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, 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 it is. Okay, well, thank you very much for that conversation.
I only have one other unrelated question that I thought of earlier today. Going through all this stuff for the second or third time, and I don't know how, if I don't ask the question very well, then we can take it offline. I'll write emails and we'll figure it out. Because it's a weird, it's a weird question in a way. I was thinking earlier today if there is some sort of guidance or some sort of analysis that is or can be done that will help us understand just how much, and now this is a hard way of saying it, but how much property we need as a town for retail and commercial to make up for the imbalance that we always hear about being supposed to be 60, 40 or 70, 30 and we're like 92, 8 or whatever we are, you know what I mean? We're so imbalanced on the residential side.
Yeah, the tax base.
So the context of this question comes from trying to understand with all this residential stuff that keeps coming and that we keep approving, are we squeezing commercial to the outside of town because we're losing, you know what I mean? We're losing ground. And so I worry, like, are we putting ourselves into a position that there's not any more land downtown that can be developed commercially because it's just locked in residential, especially established residential communities?
Yeah. And it could be locked horizontally and vertically by building limits.
But you understand, you know, I mean, it's a weird question, but I'm just trying to figure out, like, well, we need 17 acres more in order for us to give us this balance. And if we can find that in the areas we want them, then, you know, I'm thinking, okay, there's a little bit of a room to breathe there.
There's definitely industry science about exactly what you're describing. It would be getting that and applying it to our geography, you know, our known things and then figuring that out. What's healthy, what's slightly sick, what's, you know, deathbed, as far as it caught from an economic standpoint, from a land use perspective, Max.
Just wanted to add, there is a request for proposals out now. Responses are due April 1st. The request is for an update to our comprehensive plan. And within that is a focus on updating our economic development strategic plan. So exactly what you're talking about is something we'll be looking at with that. And my planner's gut says we're in good shape and we have room to go the right direction. We just need to understand what sites to reserve for commercial and non-residential and...
Is that one of the things I struggle with a little bit here, trying to figure out, like, well, how much, you know, how much do we, you know, how much do we worry about? Because I know we've got that big economic plan with the Fowler Road extension and all of that big park stuff. And is that supposed to be the big thing that sets us and rebalances us? You know, so that's what, that was one of the reasons why I thought of it. Because like, well, if that's the one thing that's gonna bring us into balance, then where is that or how else are we gonna still make up that ground with that not happening?
Sure. That commercial growth feasibility study will be considered when we update the comprehensive plan. But I don't think that's the one thing. I think we need to look at the land use across the entire town and have hopefully a great consultant help us with that and we can continue to have that discussion.
Okay, cool. Thank you. All right. Anything else?
No, that's at the end of the agenda.
All right. Town charge report?
I don't have anything to report, but thank you to staff for putting this together. I think this is really helpful and helping us process as we, you know, as we walk through this as these different matters. And so I thank you all for doing that and thinking about doing the flow chart as well. So, and for asking great questions and thinking strategically. So, thank you all.
All right, thank you. Anyone on the board have any other business?
I have none.
All righty. On to the last item on the agenda, adjournment. Will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.
All righty.
Nice.